We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, wunaguru bangala miriya, yuradamilbu. Thank you.
Meeting, the night. I can inform you that today's officially not one of our 301 days of sunshine. Following on from our welcome to country, in presenting the oath on behalf of elected members, we, the Waila council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we all can share. Item three, traditional advisory notices, those that wish to or can, would like to stand, followed by a moment's silence. Deanne Meldrum, Sylvia Record, Elaine New, Colin Ferguson, Sita Rani, Harry Chapman, Polly Carter, Kevin Raymond, Denise Coyne, Colin Wilson, Phil Hinton, Chrissie Discombe, Hannah Law Friedrich, Patricia Harrison, Gwen Renton, Mary Williams, Jean Davidson, Cynthia Hayhurst, Audrey Discombe, and Jennifer Ayd. We reflect on those members of our community who are no longer with us. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have no apologies, we have our full portion. There are no leave of absence. Item five, the council member executive declarations, 5.1, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they feel that they should share? CEO.
Through the mayor, I'd like to confirm that I've got a conflict of interest in relation to item 20.1.1, which is to do with the CEO commemoration. So I will be leaving the meeting during the discussion on that item.
Thank you, CEO. Item 5.2, gifts and benefits, does anybody have a gift or benefit they should declare? Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Yes, I've received four hard hats and a high vis vest and a pair of safety glasses from an inspection at Boral, approximate value eighty dollars, and I'll put that through the register.
That's an unusual one, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now moving on to item six, minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday, the 16th of June 2025, we have a recommendation, is that moved by councillor Knox?
Your worship, I was going to ask a question in regard to gifts and benefits. Do staff and elected members need to declare a gift or a benefit if they attended the formal dinner out at the airport, which was paid for by a contractor?
Through the mayor, what we'll do is we'll do a general declaration on behalf of all the attendees, just for fitness purposes, so that we've got a record of that, thanks.
To the flag that we should have declared it.
Thank you for that councillor Knox. Councillor Simpson.
Proposing.
We have a mover and councillor Simpson, would somebody care to second the recommendation, the motion? Deputy Mayor Boarder. We have a mover and a second of the recommendation, I'll put that recommendation, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, 23rd of June 2025, we have a recommendation, councillor Knox. And do I have a second please? Councillor Campbell, we have a mover and a second, I'll put the recommendation, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, there are nil. Item eight, deputations, there are nil. Item nine, petitions, there are nil. Item 10, public questions, I'm advised we have no questions. Item 11, council members' activities, which we'll be scrolling through on the screen at the moment, another busy period. I guess it will only get busier at this time of the year. Thank you, everybody, for your involvements. Item 12, presentations, we have none. Committee reports, there are no committee reports. Item 14, reports from council offices, 14.1, Office of the Chief Executive, ordinary reports, 14.1.1, the Chief Executive Officer's action report for June 2025 with a recommendation. Before I take a motion, I refer anyone with any questions to the CEO. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Yeah, so page 39, Marina seat locations, will community groups with an interest in mobility and accessibility of the jetty seating, they have an opportunity to give input into where those seats will be located?
Deputy Boarder, yes, so we've done an overarching plan, which shows where, when you have a look at the best practice separation distance for walking, where we would put those chairs, we've got the draft plan of where that will go, and we're in the process of having some pricing competing, not just out of a catalogue, so we're going to a local fabricator to give us some pricing for those chairs as well. So, yes, we certainly can run that.
Do they contact you, or will you be reaching out? I mean, there's a couple of groups that I can...
If you can share those groups, that would be fabulous, I'd pay for them, anybody.
Yep, that'd be great. All right, and thank you. My next question was about the ex gratia payment, just in regards to your comments there on the report, Justin. Can you confirm the state government intent is to include a financial benefit for the Waila community in line... Am I still hearing? Yeah. In line with the equivalent amount of rates that would be charged if the site was ratable? Is that the intent, so?
At that, this is the intent of the letter that we put to the state governments. At this point in time, we've not received a written response from the state governments. Verbally, we've been advised that the state government is amenable to having the, what was previously part of an indenture agreement, sorry, a deed outside of the indenture agreement, requiring the payments of the amounts in lieu of rates. As to the quantum, which is to your question, at this point in time, we haven't got an indication of whether the state government is supportive of our desire to have the amount increased to what would otherwise be payable based on a rate's equivalent. So until we get written advice, I'm not aware of what the state's current disposition is to that request.
Okay, thank you, and I guess my next question is, have council discussed this with our local state member? And would he advocate for us throughout, for the community on that basis for the full amount of rates?
Through the mayor, I'm not sure if we've actually specifically raised this matter with the local state member. It's certainly been a subject that's come up in various forums, but I'm not sure if it's one in which the state member is in, so happy to take that on notice and provide a copy of that correspondence. I think the actual letter that was sent to the state government was CC'd to the state member, but we haven't had a direct conversation, but I'm sure he would be supportive of what we're seeking.
Thank you. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There are no further questions or comments to the CEO, we have a recommendation there, that we note the CEO's action report for July 2025, councillor Knox. Move councillor Knox, seconded deputy mayor Boarder, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 14.1.2, also from the chief executive, to do with the LGA AGM, as to whether we're calling for proposed items of business if there's anything members feel that we should be trying to put forward as a motion, or just noting it. They have the recommendation there, does anybody wish to question or comment the CEO? Councillor Knox.
A couple of comments. Firstly, I presume that the AGM is available for any elected member to attend that may wish to attend. I'm not putting my hand up, but there may be others that may wish to attend, it's been the past practice of council to do that. And the second thing is in regard to the resolutions, I have raised this before, and I'm pretty sure that the LGA won't want to touch it, but we are, as a councils across the state, collecting the state government tax, notably the tax for the landscape boards, which the state government calls a levy collected by councils, but it's in reality a state government tax, and I don't believe that council should be collecting it. But I think we referred it to the LGA once before, and they pushed it gently to one side.
In the hands of...
Yeah, through the mayor, we can certainly look at when that matter may have been last raised, and whether the LGA has got a position in relation to that matter. And if it was raised some time ago, or if there's no stated position, then we can certainly look at resubmitting that.
Yeah, thank you for raising that councillor. Any further questions or comments to the CEO, and that will certainly take that on board. Councillor Pond.
I'd just like to back up what councillor Knox just said, if we could get as much notice as possible as hoping to attend, that would be great. When it comes out about a week before, it's not enough time to put plans in place, thank you.
That meeting, we can certainly get the dates out, it's in November. I've just been advised the dates are in the report, it is November. We have a recommendation there, if there's no further questions or comments, would somebody care to move that recommendation? Councillor Knox. Moving. Seconded deputy mayor Boarder. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. 14.2, corporate services ordinary reports, 14.2.1, the monthly budget report for June 2025. Before I call for movers, I refer to the CEO who may wish to refer to Grant. Does anyone have any questions or comments? In that case, if there are no questions or comments, we have a recommendation, would somebody care to move that recommendation? Councillor Simpson, and seconded councillor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. 14.2.2, the certification of the 2024-25 financial statements. We have a recommendation there, as being an administrative matter. Councillor Knox.
Just a question, should we not cite the documents before we approve them for signing?
No, it's a bit of a quirk of the Local Government Act, they can't be certified until the day that they go to the audit committee. And basically, the mayor and the CEO have to sign it off, but under the way the Government Act is written, they have to be given permission each year to do that certification. It's a bit of a weird quirk, so this is basically an administrative... So they'll still come back to council for full adoption, but the certification, which is basically saying that they're accurate and correct from a management's point of view, has to be signed by those two officers at that date.
Councillor Knox. Do I have a second please? Deputy Mayor Boarder, we have a motion, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. 14.2.3, the Waila Airport Runway Upgrade Project Update. We have a recommendation there, but if any questions or comments, which I'll refer to the CEO, who I'm sure will also then refer them. Any questions? If not, we have a recommendation, the council notes the progress of the Waila Airport Runway Upgrade Project. Would somebody care to move that way? Move councillor Todd, seconded councillor Simpson, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2.4, the quarterly procurement report. Again, we have a recommendation. Do I have any questions or comments which I can refer to the CEO? Councillor Knox.
I've got a comment, on page 90, we're providing the sum of $23,765 to paint a mural on the footpath, I'm all in favour of murals, but I don't believe that painting it on a footpath is the best bang for the buck. It's not that visible, it's far more visible, it's on the side of a building. That's just my take, I think it's a lot of money to spend painting a footpath when you could have had a really nice work of art somewhere else, far more visible. And is the school contributing?
Yes, I'm happy to answer that one through the chair. So this one was part of our city amenities project, it's a bit of a trial, I think, of that area and a bit of sort of livening up that area of the town. And so it was actually, yeah, organised in conjunction with the school, who are contributing to the project, and who are then sort of also adopting the verge that's being done next to it, in terms of some plodings and stuff, to sort of being responsible for that moving forward. So, yes, I guess it was a trial as part of that city amenity project.
Well, I still don't think it's bang for the buck in putting it on a footpath. And how much is the school contributing?
They contributed $7,000.
So it's a $30,000 painting the footpath project.
No, no, so it's a council's 16, and 23 was the total cost, we paid for it, and they gave us seven.
It's an indigenous doing it in going, so not contributing anything. I just don't think it's the correct spend of money to paint a footpath when we could do the side of a building far more visible.
That's very done, that was... Yeah, so this is reporting the... So why it's in this report, it's reporting a single source sign-off. So like, it's, this report is about things that didn't get multiple quotes, sometimes with artists, this was an artist one, so it was hard to get a second quote for it, for the nature of what they wanted. So this report is not about a project update, it's about procurement exemptions that have occurred. So yes, that was done.
Rest of my case, it's a waste of money.
Certainly note the comment, thank you councillor.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't notice that, councillor Copland.
Just a question, page 92, non-local spend, I see there was some laptops purchased. I'm just curious, did you purchase all your IT equipment, or some of it least?
No, all purchased, and I imply, councillor.
CEO.
Just further to the report, with this report's intention being to confirm how much money is spent on locals versus non-locals. Just want to provide an update to councillors, that we're looking at holding a local contractors' briefing session on the 13th of August, at which time we'll be able to present all of the programme of works that we've got slated for the 12 months coming, to encourage contractors and suppliers to be ready to tend it for those works as and when they come to market, which we've discussed recently with councils. First one that's likely to get to market will be the Porshaw Plaza tender. So keen to make sure that all of our local contractors are aware of those upcoming opportunities. We'll be holding that session on the 13th of August. Invitation will be sent to all elected members to attend.
Thank you, CEO, for that. Councillor Simpson.
These are compact as fire, worry about.
Thank you. We have a quarterly procurement report there with a recommendation, well, thank you for your input. Deputy Mayor Boarder. Do I have a second please? Councillor Westerman has seconded, therefore I will put the recommendation, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. 14.2.5, the draft reconciliation action plan. Again, we have a recommendation there, before I call for a mover. Do I have any questions or comments which I will refer to the CEO? Councillor Pond.
I think this is a really good plan, well done, but I do have a couple of comments. First of all, you've mentioned in there about training, just wondering if that's happened recently? And was that open to all staff or just section?
Through the mayor, we haven't done the training, we have been trying to secure somebody who can run cultural awareness training for us. Once we do secure that, it will be mandatory for all staff to attend.
And elected members?
Yes, we can certainly add elected members to that, part of our training needs analysis for staff, it is mandatory, so if elected members want to be included, then absolutely.
The last time we did it was probably about seven years ago, and I did pass on a couple of contact details to the CEO for people that can conduct that training. One was through Country Arts, and the other one is through the Bangla Board. That is, that's just one comment. You're probably going to hear this at the catch-up with the Aboriginal community, that a little bit disappointing that there was no Aboriginal representation on the group. The first one was done in consultation, reconciliation is about everyone coming together. So it was about a 50-50 split of Indigenous and non-Indigenous panel members, just a comment there. And just as a suggestion, there is a gap every year, we don't do much for Reconciliation Week, but I think it'd be fantastic if council could do a morning tea. Just putting something out there, everyone is all over NADOC Week, but reconciliation we do forget about. I think that's a great opportunity for council to take up some sort of event there for everyone coming together. But I think it's a really good plan, I've been waiting for it for a long time to come out, well done. Great job, love it.
Thank you councillor. If there are no further questions or comments, we have a recommendation, would somebody care to move that recommendation please? Councillor Pond.
Moving.
And councillor Knox, seconding again, we have a recommendation with those... Pardon me. Those in favour? Those against? Carried, thank you. Item 14.2.6, the representation review report, quite a lengthy document there, which we have had to undertake. Any questions or comments to the CEO? Councillor Knox.
Move the recommendation.
Move councillor Knox, do I have a second please? Councillor Simpson. We have a recommendation moved and seconded, very lengthy document, essential for us to comply with, I'll put that motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2.7, paddlefish dive sites of Fools Bay Track. Take the report as read, we have a recommendation. Does anybody have any questions, councillor Knox?
I have a question. The $120,000 has been drawn from the capital budget. Is reshooting a road considered capital works? Because if not, I would have thought it would have just come from the the general road maintenance budget for unsealed roads.
Yep, I'm happy to answer that through the chair. So there's two main activities that come in, I'm taking on an unsealed road. So you've got patrol grading, which is an operational task. Yeah, reshooting is a capital task because you're putting new material down, and that can be capitalised. So this, well, for a long time, for a number of years now, we haven't had a reshooting budget, but as part of our review of our roads, that was, I was thinking, about 12 months ago, we actually started budgeting for reshooting now, over the next few years. In the year just gone, we did a section of the Gulfview Drive. And so, yeah, so we now have an ongoing reshooting budget in our capital programme.
Thank you for that. Councillor Pond.
I'm moving.
Move councillor Pond, councillor Knox, seconding. We have a motion, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 14.3, City Growth Ordinary Reports, 14.3.1, Community Land Management Plans, another fairly lengthy document there. If we have any questions or comments, I will refer them in the first instance to the CEO, councillor Knox.
Very quick comments, one that really, really bugs me, aircraft hangars are G-A-R-S, not E-R-S. They are not clothes hangars, sorry.
Thank you councillor. Any other further comments or questions? In that case, would somebody care to move the recommendation please? Deputy Mayor Boarder. And seconded councillor Knox. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 14.4, City Infrastructure Ordinary Reports, we have none. Item 15, Information Decision Reports, council members, 15.1, council members, 15.1.1, the mayor's list of engagements which you have there. I will endeavour to answer any other questions or provide any other information that you may wish. Councillor Knox.
I'd like to commend you, your worship, for all the work you do for our community, and all the meetings you attend, but I've raised this one before, the leadership group meetings. Can we see the minutes of those meetings, or the agendas? Or can we at least be made aware of the outcomes, if any, from those meetings?
Yes, through the CEO, it has been raised.
Yes, and through the mayor, we will be sharing the minutes. The last meeting was only held last week, so we're waiting for the minutes to come out, and then they will be circulated with elected members.
Thank you for the question councillor. Councillor Knox.
Move the recommendation.
All right, do I have a second please? Deputy Mayor Boarder, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item 15.2, Corporate Services City Growth, 15.2.1, the monthly information report for July 2020,000... Yeah, 25. Bugs obviously just not in the voice at the moment, it's going elsewhere. We have a recommendation there, before I put that, does anybody have any questions of the CEO or others that I can refer to? Councillor, Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Just a quick comment, amazing reports as always, and just a compliment to the finance, just regarding management, all the funds, that it was quite an extensive and undulating period of time with some significant dollars coming in and going out. And I just think that we will all see the airport upgrade as an enormous success, and I think it's in a very large part due to the seamless operation of the financial element as well, which would often go unnoticed, so I just wanted to highlight that for the community to see, that it's that behind-the-scenes work that also makes a huge difference as well.
Certainly does, thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor Knox.
Got a couple of questions in regard to food safety. First one is, does council actually employ currently an environmental health officer?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Does that officer still do the work for air peninsula councils?
Oh, he doesn't.
Oh, he doesn't, okay.
Sorry, just to do a supplementary response, not as a standing service provision. From time to time, a council may approach us if they've got a particular issue, not just environmental health or food inspections, but other matters, including, you know, finance, for example. So from time to time, we do provide support to other councils, but no standing arrangements in terms of environmental health. We did, as a air peninsula group, look at... We did, as a air peninsula group, look at a number of shared service opportunities. Environmental health was one. Wylde said that we would be happy to host an additional resource that could be shared with other councils, but unfortunately we're unable to secure. A resource to undertake that that work, so consequently. Yeah, sure.
There is the potential that over coming months, that that position is actually a someone we've hired for a twelve month period because the incumbent took some extended leave. So there is the potential that we may be able to revisit that that potential opportunity in coming months to provide that shared service because we may actually have. A small window where we may be able to secure two resources. With one of them, with the model that was previously explored, one of those would be completely funded by the other air peninsula councils. So. We'll look at that over coming months as that that contract comes towards an end.
Any further there councillor? Thank you. Councillor Pond?
I'd just like to say the new bus looks absolutely fantastic. I think it's a huge drawcard for any of the tours. That we'll be taking and good advertising for everything that we have on offer. Well done whoever put that together. And I'd just like to to back up councillor Knox. When you asked about the food inspector. Our food inspector takes their job very, very seriously. I get the food inspector every single year for the Wylde show. They go through every single food van. It is a two day job, inspecting every single van every year.
And I can assure you, the comments from councillor Pond in her other capacity, it's frustrated that he is so good. But we have. The report in front of us with the recommendation. Would somebody care to move that recommendation? Deputy Mayor Border?
Moving.
Move. Do I have a second please councillor Todd? I'll put the motion those in favour. Against carried. Thank you. Item sixteen notices of motion. We have none. Item seventeen questions on notice. We have none. Item eighteen questions without notice. Does anybody have a question without notice? Councillor Knox?
Sorry, I've got five, but I'll be quick as I can. They won't take long. The Point Lady Lighthouse, the top of the lighthouse. I've seen some drone footage recently and that is really highly corroded. As a heritage item, I would imagine that the costs to reinstate that are going to go through the roof. What are we doing about it?
Yes, we have got some budget, but the budget, as you rightly suggested, it is quite an expensive thing to do. So we're in the process of doing some staged spend. And we do have to get the state heritage branch's approval. To remove some stuff for a period of time with the promise that those things will go back when they're done. So it is going to be that we'll be seeking some extra funds in another financial year.
Okay, the longer we let it go, the worse it's going to get. That's my problem. The the second thing is now we've upgraded the childcare centre. I'm I'm wondering.
Sorry.
Oh, apologies. Yes, go ahead Liz.
Thanks Mayor. Just on Jodie's comment, we currently doing a reasonable significant assessment to determine how we can actually. Main probably maintain the lighthouse over a number of years budgets. So this year we look to do step one and then step two will be. reinstating the the products that are removed from the lighthouse within further budget years.
Thank you for that Liz. That is certainly something we have to look at.
The next question is the childcare centre. Now we spent all the money on it. Do you have any idea or any forecasts of when it is likely to start turning a profit?
Yep, so obviously the new parts of the centre are open. There are some, over this year, there's some additional renewal works that will happen. Around the the old part of the centre. When, they have been approved for eighty five places now up from sixty eight, but they can't, they won't start using the full eighty five until those renewal works are completed. But. So it's going to probably take another year or two to fully see the flow through of the income and the impact on our position. But, you know, we do expect that over the next two years that it will have a very, it will have a positive impact, obviously, on the on the centre, having a seventeen extra positions there. And then and then we've got a couple more tweaks we can potentially make to our fees. We're probably. Slightly still below and we really need to be at the market average. So we'll be doing those reviews over the next twelve months as well as that, as the full centre comes online.
Yeah, my concern maybe is private operators run childcare centres and not all, but that one more, they don't all run very well, mind. But but they do turn a profit, most of them. So I'm just wondering when we're going to start turning that profit in ours, maybe in the next two years. But I think it's a space we need to to keep an eye on. We recently found out at a at a at a meeting here that council replaces its vehicles every five years. And there is no mileage mentioned in that policy in regard to replacing vehicles. So. I understand that we're going to review that policy, but it needs to have some sort of mileage in there. It is it's no use keeping a vehicle since, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand kilometres or whatever. Or it should be a certain number of kilometres or five years, whichever comes first. And I'd venture to say that maybe five years is not the most efficient as well. I know that some years back, we were replacing vehicles every two years. I'm not talking about cars and things, but they were going at every two years back then. So. When we look at that policy, and I presume it'll come back to council soon, I hope those things will be taken into consideration. Can we find out from the state government? The the hard waste levy is a hundred and sixty six dollars per tonne in metropolitan areas. I'm not sure whether we're metropolitan area or whether we're not, and eighty eight dollars for those areas which aren't metropolitan. Can we find out where that money is actually being spent? Because some time ago, I understand it was all going on. Sand replenishment at metropolitan beaches. I'm pretty sure that's not the case now. But it would be interesting to know whether it goes into general revenue or whether it's being used to promote recycling or actually put things in place to recycle things.
Certainly appreciate those questions. Thank you very much.
And the last one I've got.
Oh, sorry.
Is the most notable sports person Wylde's ever produced, is Barry Robber. I think we need to give some thought to providing some recognition within this community. To Barry. I think we probably need to contact his family to see if they were happy with that. I know they've refused, I think, the offer of a state funeral. But he, you know. For anybody that saw him play, I have never seen a better AFL footballer, full stop. And I'm a massive Port Adelaide and Russell Leavitt fan. But I think that, you know, he came from this country, this city. He was born here, he played his first football here for Norths. And I think there should be some recognition within our community, whether that's a mural or whether it's a statue or something. I think we should think about doing something. Well, I know we've got a street, Barry Robben Street, but I think we need to go a little stage further because we probably never will produce a sportsman of his ilk.
I certainly definitely take that on board. Thank you councillor. Do I have any further questions without notice?
Just a comment about David's question about EPA levy. I can tell you, there used to be a thing called zero. There used to be a zero waste fund. So all that money used to go into a zero waste fund, but infrastructure projects, it now goes to general revenue. So that's where you.
Thank you for that clarification councillor. Is there are no further questions without notice? Are there any motions without notice? No motions without notice. Item twenty, then we come to confidential items. Now, do you wish to keep progressing or do you want your supper break? Keep going. In that case, unfortunately, for those of you who've come out into this weather. Please enjoy the coffee out there.